All right, time having arrived, I call this meeting of the Accounts Committee to order. With me as always are Counselor-at-Large David Texera, Counselor-at-Large Wyn Farwell, Ward Seven Counselor Shirley Azak, Ward Four Counselor Susan LaCastro. I apologize for the delay in starting. We had some technical challenges with the software that we are using to put everything up on the screens and to, you know, get the answers that we are looking for. So there's going to be some things that we're not going to be able to pull up in real time, but anything that we can't get tonight, we'll get the answers for at the next meeting. But we will jump right into it to the best of our ability, as is our charge. Madam Auditor, let's take item number one, the instructions and policies saved to the Auditor's webpage discussion. I know this is something we've talked about in the last meeting.
Yep.
And it's just something that you've taken on to try and improve transparency for the city, but also to preserve structure and policy when it was not as well written down in the past.
Correct. Can everyone see the City Auditor's webpage on their screen in front of them?
No.
No.
Are we on BCA?
Might have to alert him.
Let me go, you stay here. I'll go.
Yep.
And he already has the stuff he knows.
I'll turn that on in a second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're working on it.
Just wait for him to pull that up so you guys can see. But yes.
There you go.
There we are.
Okay, look at that.
We, this year, my staff and myself spent a lot of time trying to put as many of our processes available online for all city departments, school included, to be able to access more easily, if anything, to help alleviate questions. A lot of the times when we, you know, when we've got new folks coming in and out and there's turnover, it's difficult to sort of pinpoint amongst us all who's, you know, been trained and who hasn't, who has instructions and who doesn't. So we thought would be best to centralize all of our processes in one place that's easily accessible, which would be the City Auditor's webpage. And here towards the bottom are our auditing process and procedures for city and school departments. So if you click on that link, it brings you to a ton of blue buttons. These are just one of many processes we perform in the City Auditor's office. There's schedules for our bi-weekly and weekly payrolls, so people have an idea of what weeks are covered during a certain pay period, what the check date will be. A lot of this was, in the past, emailed to someone, to a department, given to them, and I thought it would be best, really, for obvious reasons, for everything to just be in one place, so everyone has access to it. We have, when it comes to payroll processes and time entry and making changes to an employee record, if you've got a new hire, if you've got a change in salary, there's a particular form that you need to fill out, a personal action form. That form itself and the instructions on how to process it or even really understand payroll processes in general are all here now. So I'll click on that, since I was just speaking of it. And this is a PowerPoint presentation created by my staff to help in terms of, you know, everyone understanding how to process a personal action form, how to do payroll, period. It's rather long, I'm very proud of them. They really, really put a lot of detail into this. We put screenshots from Munis, so anyone who's brand-new as a payroll clerk would just need this PowerPoint and would already have Munis access, and they could just follow along. Which screen do I go to? What does this mean? We have a lot of, let me know if you want me to stop scrolling, we have a lot of, what I would say, a little more complicated than usual CPAs, especially when it comes to payroll. So this is really helpful, and we've got a lot of positive feedback from people in just sort of understanding the way everyone needs to think when you're doing payroll. We all need to have the same mindset as financial professionals, if that makes sense. So here are cutoff times for our time sheets at the bottom. Our goal in the end when processing payroll is always to observe deadlines. We're a very deadline-driven, deadline-heavy office, as is Treasury, and that's just typical of any financial department. So you'll see, we really tried to cover everything, you know, not just this is how you process a payroll, this is how you do a form. In essence, this is how you need to think of payroll. There's a timekeeping component, you need to keep track of your employees, there's so many different avenues that need to be covered when doing this work. This gets into all of the typical, all of the rather detailed information on time entry and stuff, so I won't get into the steps there, but I'll go back to what I was referring to when it came to payroll calculations and being able to interpret how to process payroll properly per a CBA and the text in the CBA, the collective bargaining agreement. So we put together another PowerPoint presentation to help assist payroll clerks with these Things like out-of-grade, things like stipends, there's lots of different scenarios, especially with departments like, you know, DPW or police, that can get, a person who is unfamiliar with these contracts can really fall into the weeds and have a hard time kind of understanding just the math when properly calculating their employees' pay to include on a time sheet. Of course, we have our contact information available. It's just two personnel, I'm sorry, two PowerPoints having to do with payroll. Here's our approval, approval instructions. So there's a lot that anyone-
Could, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Oh, could we see the vendor setup procedure?
Yes.
This is something that we're, you know, always talking about, the one-time vendors, the, you know, the way things are filed and organized, but-
Yeah.
We have so many vendor-related questions.
So this is basically how to set up a vendor. We need a W-9, we have to have an easily viewable social security number or tax ID number to input into the system, reasons why they're being paid. In addition, since we got into the, you know, topic, especially with the folks across the street when it comes to contracts and making sure all of the contracts are on Munis, we're requiring departments to attach contracts to the vendor profile automatically. This is our form. And here's a W-9 for anyone to grab to accompany setting up this vendor. These W-9 forms from the IRS have actually changed format-wise a lot over the years, so we still get very old versions, so we thought having a new version on the City Auditor's webpage would be beneficial.
Makes sense.
We also developed a grant form. When creating grants on the accounting system, we require departments to fill out our grant form, and this would task them with, basically, expectations of how you're supposed to be taking care of your grants. You should be aware of this information from the beginning, the grant agreement, when the grant started, the end date. There's a specific code for federal grants that we need, a CFDA, things like that. This really gets people to start thinking, you know, it's not just, we got a grant from the Department of Agriculture. We need the rest of this data to set up your grant. Where do you get that? I'm not sure. I might need to make a phone call to someone in that grant agency so I can learn more about these grants. So there's this thinking component that I think needs to occur, and quite simply, having it available and displayed in a form and even required is a huge step. In terms of creating a grant as well, we have a PowerPoint for explaining grants and kind of why it's important from an auditing and accounting perspective, why the data needs to be accurate. And that's what all of this does, and says, rather, and explains. So a huge, huge part of us putting these, our forms on the system, was me also explaining to the staff and with the ability to explain to everyone the why. Why is it important to fill out this data on this grant form? What does it mean for the auditor, right? It helps us fill out a report that we have to submit to the Department of Revenue, and they want all of this, and they want to make sure we're looking at it and we're tracking it. So that was the purpose of having not just the form on there and just follow the form. Here's an explanation of why this work that we're doing, all of us, is important. Everybody get a good look at that? We also have, oh gosh, where do I go next? Well, what do you guys want to see next?
Counselors? Any particular-
First off, I-
Counselor Azak?
I would just like to say, this is a lot of information, and you guys did a great job. I think this is really, I went on my phone to try to see how to locate it, so it is directly on the auditing page, which is, it's really easy and a lot of information, so thank you.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Farwell?
Just on the, just pull up the travel expense voucher, I'd like to see that.
I had a feeling you guys would want to see that.
Oh, boy.
This is a very large topic of discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, but we have some people who, by collective bargaining agreement, are reimbursed for the use of their personal vehicle. And those could be everyday use of vehicle, like inspectors or, you know, people that have daily duties, but then we have other people, for example, we might have to send a city solicitor into Boston and defend the city at federal court, so they're going to get mileage and parking fees. Is this the voucher that we would, that would be used? And what are the sign-offs on this, the department head, I'm sure?
Yes, they would use this. It's a mileage, it could be used as a mileage reimbursement. They would submit this with their purchase order, and the sign-off would be on the P.O. So we would see that signed by the department head with the accompanying form.
Okay, so if, let's say I had, I'm an assistant city solicitor, for whatever reason, I had to go to Worcester for a court appearance, so I would get, I would fill this out for my mileage from Brockton to Worcester and returning, and any turnpike fees that might accrue, and then any parking fees that I might have to pay in Worcester. It would be reduced to writing, it would go to the department head, and they would approve it? Is that, have I got the process down?
Right, but along with the form itself, we have other documentation that needs to accompany the form. So for mileage, we would need a Google Map screen print of the miles that were driven from 45 School Street to the location of where they were going, and then that's how we can calculate, just to, and rather, audit the mileage reimbursement to make sure it was calculated correctly.
All right, and by the way, how long do we have to retain these records?
Three years, but I like to keep things longer.
Okay.
Of the banking world, when we kept things for seven years.
Yep.
And I'm a little stuck on that, which I'm not, I don't think I can be, because I don't think, I think we're running out of room for all this paper, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, this is, it's good to see that it's all logged and it's all so available as well, so people can see. And it is important that this stuff be, you know, organized and a record be kept, because these, you know, how to do things was sort of just passed down, so having it more organized is definitely productive. Yeah, I think it's a, it's a ton of information, and that's, that's it, that's what we're hoping to say. Counselors, does anyone have anything else for, for the policies? All right.
That's good.
Thank you, Madam Auditor.
You're very welcome.
Now we're on to item number two, answers to questions asked at the Accounts Committee meeting held on the 29th.
Okay.
And I know that, got a couple of answers, I know that you dug, you dug deep.
So I was able to obtain a couple of answers, in particular, three. I'll start with PO 296-50123. This was a payment for $700 cut from the Parking Authority's budget to pay for a dumpster for a vendor to empty it out. And it was an expense that's incurred because the parking garages unfortunately accumulate so much rubbish and yard waste that they need a little bit of extra help to gather it and dispose of it. The second answer I have for you was in relation to the payment to Shapiro Law Group, that was for PO 323-51470. Unfortunately, what had occurred was a former employment, employment, employee of this department was overpaid due to a clerical error, which has since been rectified. And because of that, in essence, they had two contracts at once. So when the settlement occurred, the school department decided to settle to allow payment for legal fees and payment for, it was a one-month's worth of pay that they paid back to the employee, and this employee apparently went on their way. That's pretty much the gist of what occurred. Any other questions as it relates to that? I believe I forwarded the committee the settlement agreement. I did speak with the staff at BPS to discuss internal controls about this not happening again. They absolutely agreed that this should not have, and they already have implemented controls to prevent that from happening again. Unfortunately, it was a situation where one department had one contract and another department had another contract, and wires didn't cross. So now they've implemented more of an organized structure and flow to make sure that one place gets all the MOAs, gets all the CBAs, and that they're responsible for passing it over to the payroll office and making sure the employee record's updated correctly and that this, any employee is getting paid by the correct rate.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Farwell?
I think I raised that issue, and I would just say to the auditor, we can't tell you what to do, but I would, I would ask that if you, if you receive an invoice to pay legal fees, I want to make sure our city solicitor has reviewed whatever settlement we're going to make, because it's not just the dollar figure, it's the precedent that that might set.
Yeah.
And sometimes when you settle a legal case, and I'm not an attorney, but I've seen this argued so many times, that you establish a precedent for how any future cases would be handled, and it's just my belief, and I'll defer to my colleagues, that if we're settling cases involving public funds for a city department, any city department, schools or otherwise, the law department, the city solicitor, should absolutely be included in any discussions, agreements, and should look over any written agreements that are offered for settlement of that case. It, I mean, why else have a law department if it's not there to protect the interests of the city and the interests of the public funds? So if, maybe you could bring that up at a department head meeting, you know, it's entirely up to the mayor, it's not up to us as counselors, but I'm just trying to take a common sense approach to how we settle legal cases in Brockton.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, I know that the Nice from Beckman Paris report indicated that school payroll and school HR weren't talking to each other as much. I think there were 300 employees that they were paying that HR didn't know they had. So it is good that this is being rectified and the school department is coming on board with the system. And so this guy was paid too much and sued us because he was paid too much, and we settled. What a, what a life. All right.
I believe you all, the entire council, will be seeing a lot of restructuring when the school department presents their FY '26 budget. This is really where you're going to see-
Oh, perfect.
-how these controls are going to be coming into place.
Good. And you have the third item?
Yes, the cherry sheet revenue.
Yes.
So we had a funny check that you all picked up on to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, "check" air quotes. Now, let me see if I can find the actual PO. It was on page 302, I'm sorry, I don't have the pen in front of me, but it's been discovered, and in the short amount of time I've been here, I think it goes without saying that myself and my staff have been working overdrive to sort of stop crises from happening, stop bleeding from happening, and try to fix a lot of systems that need to be, I would say, polished and improved, and this is one of them. So what we do is, we get, at the end, at the, every fiscal year, we get receipt estimates from the Department of Revenue that we're going to receive from the state. And this is given to us, and we book it monthly. This is what's referred to as the cherry sheet revenue. What we do is, we're allotted certain amounts of money for certain things. We have different line items on our accounting system specifically for Chapter 70 for school, right? School choice. This is money we're getting in. Sorry, I'll start over. Every city in the Commonwealth is listed, and I've pulled up Brockton for FY '25. So there's an education, education revenue we get, general government, and a total at the bottom, 290 million and some change. There's an offset to this initial chunk of money we get, which are called assessments and charges. What we technically need to pay back to the state, things like the county tax. To put it simply, things that the state provides and pays for that benefits the city and everyone around us, really, so we have to sort of give our chunk for that. The RMV non-renewal surcharge, I don't know if anyone's familiar with that, paying for regional transit, various other tuition that we need to pay for, for school choice and charter. These assessments or charges are what you guys saw during our last meeting with that quote-unquote "check." We processed it in the past through the Accounts Playable System to reflect that expense, which I don't necessarily agree with. We don't need to put a fake check through the AP system to show an expense, we can post a simple journal entry. I think that would be more efficient, and it would look less funny to you guys, because it's on a pay, a paid invoice warrant, but it wasn't an actual payment to the Commonwealth. What we did was, we reflect our estimates, our receipts that come in, our charge that we have to pay back, and what, the difference between the two and what we actually get and keep is the net. That's it. That would explain the payment that you saw to the Commonwealth. It's simply an accounting reflection, not an actual check, of the assessed charges we need to give back to the state for these services. Does that make sense? The RMV non-renewal surcharge is, we buy into a system with the RMV here in the Treasury's office, and cities and towns have the option of buying into this if they want. If we send out excise taxes and they're not paid, we have a deputy collector that sends out notices, right? And you can charge a $5 demand, $20, so on and so forth. It gets to a point where there's one last fee you can charge, a fourth fee, to ensure that the taxpayer pays their excise tax. If they don't, you have the option to buy into the RMV non-renewal database, where you, in essence, go on and you tell the RMV, this taxpayer hasn't paid their excise tax, their license renewal needs to be put on hold. When they go to the RMV to renew their license or even renew their registration, the RMV staff gets a flash saying, "We can't renew this, you have to pay their excise tax." They're forced to pay it to Brockton. The staff here releases the hold, and then the taxpayer can proceed and renew their license or registration. But it's a clearly statewide system that the RMV pays for, and in essence, we're giving a little back for using the system, for helping us collect our excise taxes. Any other questions as it relates to cherry sheet revenue and charges?
Counselors?
Yeah, that's great.
None? Thank you, Madam Auditor.
Thank you.
Does clear that up? All right, item number three, review of warrants, P-25-078 through P-25-083. Counselors, anyone want to go first? Counselor Farwell?
Yeah, she was merciful, the auditor was merciful. This, this session, we only had 171 pages instead of 516, so I-
That's it, I'll ask you to step it up.
But, I was going to say, maybe by the next time we'll have 85 instead of 171, but, okay, so, let me, let me go to warrant number P-25-078.
What page?
That's going to be page six. Bay State Restaurant Products. We've spent to date $17,798.47, which would seem to suggest to me that there must be a bid or a contract, but, and I know you can't pull it up tonight, and I'll give you this copy that's highlighted, $8,735.51 for a purchase. And that just seemed, I know the business, great business, great people that run it, that just seemed to be a fairly large expenditure for, for Bay State. Now, if this were the regional school, I'd say it might be for their culinary arts program, but if it's for the high school, I would think that charter or whatever vendor has-
Charwell.
-that contract would, would take care of it. So any information you could have on that $8,735.51 purchase would be appreciated, as well as, do we have a contract and a, did we do a bid if we're going to spend that kind of money for that, for that company?
Okay, I can find that out. I can say that these are grant funds, because the org code starts with 3, and I'm pretty sure this is ARPA 3006.
Okay.
So I can get some more information on that for you.
Okay. But, but you know, even, regardless of whether it's APP or a grant fund or something, you know, open competitive bidding is the way to go.
Oh, it still needs to have a contract.
Absolutely, the way to go, okay. Let me go on.
Can I just throw this in? I believe this business is in Ward Four, and they just got written up in the newspaper for, they, they had, "Do a great business in Pans for Bar Pizza."
Well, that's, as long as they're in compliance- Well, that's, as long as they are in compliance with 30B, I have no problem with-
And I wouldn't be surprised if that, these funds were for redoing the kitchen at the Shaw Center.
At the Mary Crews Kennedy.
I hope that's not what it is, because that kitchen was well-stocked and we should have done inventory on it.
Sure.
Well, could it have been, could have been the senior center, too.
You know, the-
That's true.
The evidence and the documents will tell us what we need to know.
That's right.
So, all right, let's go on to, we're still on P-25-078, page nine. Bradco Incorporated. That happens to be the company that takes care of my garage doors. $16,033.39 year-to-date paid. There were two repairs, one for $1,344, one for $2,652. Again, I'd like to know what was repaired and do we have, did we comply with bidding for garage door repair services or facility repair services? And the general theme, I think you'll see from some of us is, and I know the Chair has mentioned a future meeting about it, the safeguards against going over that $10,000. It does something, trigger a person entering an amount to be paid that, you know, you need a contractor, you need a bid. And I don't know, we can do that at another meeting, but let me, let me try to go through these as I can. All right, I won't mention the name of the business, but we've all been sensitized to school transportation. So on page 15 of, again, warrant number P-25-078, at the top of the page, there's a business here in Brockton, and to date, to date, they have collected $332,785 in transportation. Now, keep in mind, we still have four months to go in the school year and in the fiscal year. $332,785 so far this year. So I thought to myself, okay, there's got to be a huge fleet of vehicles to collect that kind of money. And in fact, according to our assessor's office, there are only eight vehicles. And for those eight vehicles, we collect a grand total of $609.67 in excise tax because the vehicles range from 2006 to 2016. And so why do I mention this? Number one, that, this transportation issue has got to be resolved one way or the other. The auditor was kind enough to send along some invoices to me to look over, and I, they're not part of this evening's review, but I'll get them out to all of you. I mean, that's just one vendor. And the other issue is, you know, I, I don't know, do we want our school kids transported in a vehicle that's 19 years old, it's 2006, or even nine years old, 2016? Most school districts, it's been my experience, they set some limits. When they go out to bid, they would say, you know, X number of years old, no older than such-and-such a year. And I don't know what the school department does, I don't. I am told that this is a vendor that's somewhat favored by the Transportation Office because they'll drop whatever they're doing and do what needs to be done, but that is a lot of money. So I will get the invoices out to you that were provided by the auditor, you can take a look at them, but that is a, we're all in the wrong business, folks. I mean, we should, instead of Floris, you should have been a special ed transportation company, Counselor Azak, because, I mean, this is, it just surprises me. But, all right, let me go on. Okay, warrant number P-25-078, again, and this is just information for you, it's on page 25. I saw this GRAIL, G-R-A-I-L-L-C, for $25,550. So I did a little research. This is one of the best things that this city has done. This company provides cancer screening to our fire department and perhaps other public safety people, and they have actually caught people in the early, early stages of some cancers that needed to be treated or in some cases, taken care of by surgery. So I just wanted to highlight this because if you saw GRAIL LLC, you probably were like me, you had no idea what it was about. Preventative care stipend, when you see stipends, you wonder, you know, what are we paying for? This is, this is very progressive. This is very good. I wish we could afford to do it for other work, other employees here in the city, because early detection of cancer is absolutely critical to treatment. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. Now, let's go on to page 27. Again, it's warrant number P-25-078. This one will require a little bit of research, so I'll just mention it. Home Depot Credit Services. $2,357.98 year-to-date paid. When I see Home Depot Credit Services, I obviously think either Credit Card or we buy something on credit from Home Depot, which is interesting because we go to Lowe's, we go to Amazon, we're all over the place with buying different products. And I just would like to know, Madam Auditor, what those two invoices were for on that particular account? And again, that's page 27, Home Depot Credit Services. All right, the next one is page 31, and again, it's warrant number P-25-078. And this is Lexia Learning Systems, I'm going to assume it's a school, in-state travel, $5,000. And I thought it was odd to pay a company for in-state travel. So I'd like to know, if we could, what, Lexia Learning Systems, why did we give them $5,000 for in-state travel? If it said out-of-state travel, I might think they flew people in to make professional development presentations for the school department or something, but for in-state travel, that's, that's not an insignificant sum of money. And by the way, year-to-date, we've paid Lexia Learning Systems $111,000. So obviously, we have an ongoing relationship with them. And on that same page, page number 31, warrant number P-25-078, Lowe's Companies, you'll see tools and hardware, facility maintenance, facility maintenance, janitorial supplies. Madam Auditor, you've heard me say, facility maintenance doesn't tell me anything. What facility, what was done, what did we buy? Did we need it? We have paid Lowe's $66,757.69 thus far. And I just would like to know what, what we, you know, what are we buying from them? What causes this?
With departments.
And what department? Yep, that's, that's, all right. So let me try to get through these for you. I did note that we're buying a lot of things from the Aukers Company. I don't know if that's pursuant to a bid, but $2.365 million paid so far. If we could just find out, is this pursuant to a bid or a contract?
We, I believe, school department has a contract for that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, then. Page, again, warrant number P-25-078, page number 53. Ultra Lum, L-U-M, Services LLC. Tourism promotion, $425.850. Year-to-date invoiced, $2,125. What were we promoting? What tourism were we promoting with this expenditure to Ultra Lum Services? On warrant number P-25-080, Counselors, you'll notice there are multiple, multiple pages where we pay, we pay the Medicare premiums for people. And in a, in an earlier email, the auditor, many, many months ago, was kind enough to tell me that apparently these are people who went onto Medicare and because they didn't select Medicare Part B, there's a penalty. And I'm not trying to be hard about it, but there's 501 people that we're paying Medicare premiums for. And they range from $69.88, which I assume is an individual plan, to $127.57 for, I guess, a family plan. I'd just like to know, why are we continuing to pay this? We're not doing it for all of our employees who turn 65 and/or who retire, but apparently for a group of 501 people, am I correct, Madam Auditor, this is, this is a monthly obligation that we're, that we're paying?
You're correct.
Okay. And do you know, this would have happened long before you came onboard, do you know if there's any paperwork in the office that justifies? I did send an inquiry to the city solicitor. Do you know if there's anything in your office that justifies why, for this particular group of people, we're paying their Medicare Part B premiums?
From what I've gathered, there was some kind of an error that occurred decades ago when it came to Medicaid deductions for employees. And if this is what I'm thinking, it's a reimbursement because of that error that occurred.
Okay, but would it be an error-
So we probably need more detail on that, on what happened exactly.
But would it be an error in perpetuity, that for as long as these people are alive, we're going to be paying the penalty?
That's an excellent question. I don't know those details. It might be prudent to maybe invite some folks back to kind of talk about what happened way back when.
Yeah.
If the committee, you know, wishes that.
I think that would be good. Just to comment, Mr. Chair, on this item. I definitely would like to see that, first of all, to, because it looks like we're paying back the individuals, not the insurance company. And how do we prevent from something like this happening again in other situations? Because that's concerning. Thank you.
Just to come aside, I got a notice from Medicare saying I have until March 31st to sign up for Part B. And if I don't do it, I may get penalized in the future when I do do it. So I think this is what they do. But I think asking the benefits gentleman would be a good idea.
I agree.
Just a, some sort of Medicare update.
Right.
Definitely, because if the city's the one that's really paying back, isn't it? Something that makes sense.
It's a lot of money.
It is.
Yeah, and how we, how we handle it and what the procedure is.
All right, so let's, let's go to warrant number P-25-083, and it's on page 161. P-25-083. And at the very bottom of the page, the company's name is Solar, S-O-L-A-R, Mission Number Two LLC, Electricity, and we're paying them thus far this year, $1.360 million. So I thought we had an agreement with Constellation Energy or another company, but I just would like to know, why, what is this for? Why are we compensating Solar Mission Two LLC $1.36 million? And I don't know if you can tell what department would have processed that payment. Do you need, what number would you need for?
I know, it's, there's just so many numbers on here.
Age again, Counselor?
The GL account.
161. I'm sorry?
The GL account, it's a, the org code, which is that six-digit account.
Okay, let me see. 505-741?
No, that doesn't sound right. Which one is it? So this is 1874, it's out of the general fund. I don't know which department that is off the top of my head, but it's probably, probably deep down.
We can look into it.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's just that, that amount of money jumped out at me for, you know, for paying, payment. I think I may have, Mr. Chairman, I, that's all I have.
Okay. But I will, I'll make sure that you, you still have a right of follow-up.
Thank you.
Counselor Texera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. On warrant P-25-078, page four. Oh, for $6,100 for Arizona State Anniversary.
Who's the vendor?
Arizona State.
And you want the PO?
Yes.
It's a PO, 804-88001.
Thank you. This is also really helpful. Professional development, it's probably tuition reimbursement, and this is being paid out of a grant fund. That grant number, starting with five, is for the school department, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
So I can get more information for you on that.
If you can just get more information. Thank you. On page 5, warrant P-25-078, it's BH Photo Video Inc. Year-to-date, we paid $17,688.29, and the PO is 61050588.
I'm sorry, is that page 51?
No, five.
Oh, page five. I'm sorry.
Page five. I can get more info on that for you.
Now, we'll go to warrant P-25-078, page 11. Charlie and eight, Brown, we paid $9,999 year-to-date. It says, it's a Brockton High, 24150.
One dollar short.
Going out to bid.
So-
Harry, good catch.
I'll give you the PO on that. Oh, you're gonna, thank you, Chair.
So this is out of the Schools General Fund. Looks like it's some kind of technical instructions. This might be sole proprietor or contractor or something, so I can get some information for you on that.
Okay, appreciate it. Okay, same warrant, P-25-078, on page 13. Again, I'm not going to mention the company's name, but year-to-date, he's at $54,240. The reason that I asked this question, because I see on check dates, it's February 5th, he got a check for $3,000, a check for $3,900, and another check for $3,000. And again, on the same day, he got another check for $3,000 on the first page, on page 13. 13, then going back to page 14. So like I said, year-to-date, he got $54,240.
Yes.
If you can just look into it.
It starts at 13 at the bottom, and it goes over to 14.
Yeah, if you can look into it. Just, again, it's like, I'm gonna pick down Council File while we reset, you know? We want to find out, how old is this vehicle? You know, why they got preference? And if it's doable on the contract, if they can provide the year, how many vehicles each...
The year of the vehicles?
Year of the vehicles, that definitely will be helpful. It's like Council File, I don't want to put my kids, or any kids, any kids, on the bus that's like nine or 12 years old, or even six years old, you know? And because I see some of those vans out there, I wouldn't, I don't want my kids to ride on those, because to me, it doesn't look safe.
I will definitely bring that up.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Power, did it ask that question? Page 15, yes. Now, sorry. Okay, now we're gonna go to warrants, P25-083. It's the Brockton Day Nursery, and it's year-to-date, it's $134,552.6.
What page?
127, I'm sorry. I'll give you the invoice number.
How much was the, you said it's for Brockton Day Nursery?
Yes.
Okay. I can just look at the footage to figure all this out, it's fine. Thank you so much.
You know, Mr. Chairman, just through you to Counselor Texera, part of the problem is the description, other charges and expenditures. I mean, that doesn't tell us anything.
We do hate other charges.
You'd have no idea what that money was for unless you actually saw the purchase order in front of you.
Yeah. There's stuff like that, other, you know, other charges, don't worry about it, you know, that kind of answer is not something that this committee particularly likes. Counselor, you have more?
I got a few more. I'm sorry.
Okay, so I just wanted to...
Just going through my notes. On page 133, warrant P25083. It's Darren Duarte, it says other contract service, it's for $618.17. Year-to-date, it's $1,348.48, 84 cents, I'm sorry. And again, I have no idea, it's...
Page 133.
Page 133.
Well, that's gotta be the police department.
Yeah. It says, under invoice, it says reimbursements.
Yeah, but again, other contract services.
Sure.
We don't like that.
On page, warrant P27, no, P25-083, page 139. It says High Point Treatment Center, for year-to-date, $264,973.15. And again, other contracting service, I have no idea what that means. If you need a PO, I'll provide that. It's a PO 12150099.
Okay.
Off, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, it looks like something that's monthly, because they were all the month, July, August, September.
Yeah.
So this is hitting grant funds? So it's more than likely, you know, a grant program to assist anyone with treatment?
Right.
All right. Okay, on page 140, warrant P25083, the Home Depot credit card. On the same date, I see a charge of $63.72, another charge for $63.72, then another charge for $618.80, another one for $618.80. I don't know if there was a double charge, or they bought the same tools at the same time, this one. Find out.
That's weird.
Yeah.
Page... On page 45, warrant P25083, it's lowest, same thing here, once, $177.54, $177.54, then there's another charge for 327.58, 327.58, twice.
And 145?
145.
I can get more info on that for you.
Yeah. Appreciate it. And warrant P25083, page 146. This is invoice from, it says, oh, Lynch. I see a repair for $12,516.38, another one for $14,619.59. I would love to get more clarification on those invoice, because that's a lot of money for repair. Is there one invoice, or is it...
Oh, no, it's more than one invoice. So if you look, here's an invoice number to the far right, left, I'm sorry, and it's two different invoices.
Says the check number, the PO number.
That's a lot of money, though, for one vehicle.
And, Madam Auditor, I got a question. If you can get up to the...
What page, Counselor?
No, this is just a question for the auditor. I just want to, on the snow remover and ice, how much do we pay up to the year-to-date? You don't have, I know that would be a question for you to get back to us. Just, because I know CFO was in front of us on Tuesday, he said it's a little bit over $500, but over $500,000. I think it's a lot more, because going through this, and I did my math, it was a lot more than what he...
So what I can do is, we have specific line items for the snow, I can...
The snow remover and ice.
...see how many expenses have hit that.
Yeah.
Because there's, it's basically a budget report, and then you see a column for expenses paid out of that particular line.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chair. That's all I have for the time.
Thank you, Counselora Castro.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi. Okay. Well, before I go into the line items I have questions on, I wanted to ask you, I run my house, my household accounts on Quicken, and so I can do a report by name of vendor or payee, but I can also do a report on the account, or the category. And so I'm wondering, can a warrant be run based on category or account description?
I believe so. I think we did discuss this the last time, where I was going to try to export expenses paid out of particular department code?
Yes.
Is this what we're thinking of?
Yes.
I believe that we're able to do that.
Because there are some that just kept popping up in reviewing these warrants, snow removal, you know, wireless phone, vehicle repair. And then there were some for transportation for special ed or homeless. And I would just be interested to know, instead of us trying to figure it out and making a list, if you ran a report that way, that would kind of give us a snapshot of what we're spending on the different categories. That might be very beneficial.
Yeah, I would just need to know which department code you want me to run.
Well, what if you did, so you can't run it based on the account description, it would have to be on a department code?
Right.
So you couldn't do one just snow removal, as an example?
No, I'd look for the code that we have for snow expenses.
Okay.
But that's definitely something that we can do.
Yeah, that would be, I think, very helpful. And also, I'm wondering, we spend so much on vehicle, as, I've got a couple of these categories that it occurred to me, we spend so much on vehicle repair. I would be interested in running a report to show us everything, you know, on a given warrant for vehicle repair. And then my next question is, can we save money by having a garage that would do all our vehicle repair?
Well, I, just to comment on that, I remember a few years ago, we were doing in-house repairs. We hired a mechanic, so I don't know at what point we send vehicles out, at what point we keep them in-house. That would be interesting to find out as well.
Yes, and also wireless phones, Verizon, and T-Mobile, and a few others. Would it make sense, we look at how we reimburse people for their wireless phones, phone expenses, would it make sense for us to negotiate and have everybody get their wireless service through this one company that we would save money on because of the volume work? I also thought about it for, and I, I don't, I'm just looking at dollars and cents, I'm not looking at quality of education or anything like that, but you look at all of the expenses for special ed transportation and special ed tuitions. I, again, I'm not commenting or reflecting on the quality of any education that a child might need, that they would have to go out of district. But, you know, don't, I know a few years ago, we did a lot more of this educating in-house. And perhaps if we looked at all of the expenses as the result of transporting children, and then paying the tuition and the costs and stuff, it's something that could be reflected on, and perhaps we would go in a different direction. Because I took a look, and I don't think the Accounts Committee for the School Committee is meeting right now. I went all through their website, I couldn't find any minutes or any agendas for quite some time, I think since before COVID. I don't know why that is, but someone's got to look at these expenses and, you know, perhaps have a substantive discussion over, do we have to do all of this? Can we do some of this in-house? And what will save us some money? Because, you know, quality education is what it's about, but can we balance that with our own finances? So I thought the first step in doing that would be to run a report showing us in a given warrant, what are we spending for special ed transportation, for homeless transportation?
I can dig and see if I can run a report by the object code.
Okay.
I'm not sure if I'd be able to pinpoint it within a fiscal year or within certain warrants. It might give me everything that was paid against that code for the entire fiscal year for every department in the city. I don't know for sure.
If it would work?
I'm almost positive it would work, I just, at this point, I'm thinking it'll probably be a lot.
Sure.
And then to have to condense it down, we can discuss how you guys would want me to do that.
Okay.
To make it more readable, if that makes sense. Or if you wanted to see the whole thing.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, credit cards, wireless phones, you know, vehicle repair, just things that we spend a lot of money for. Maybe if we batched them all together, we would save money.
Yeah, we can, and we can take a deeper, specific dive into those as well as part of a, you know, discussion item in the agenda.
Okay. So my first one is page 14, warrant P25-078. The first complete listing, Chatterboxes LLC. I would just be interested to know, what is it for? It is a special ed.
It is, and I actually know exactly what it's for.
Okay, what is it?
This is a feeding therapy company that's provided to children that have this limitation with eating. It's more than likely on their IEP at BPS, and the district pays for that feeding therapy to occur while the kids are at school.
So someone comes in and helps them?
An actual person comes, yes, from Chatterboxes.
Okay, then don't look into it, because I understand now. Okay, and then, just as an example, on page 17, and that's warrant P25-078, the second last entry on the bottom of the page, I don't want to say the person's name, but the account description is athletic, non-PR, nonprofit? And there are a lot of these all throughout this warrant.
Throughout all, throughout all the warrants.
For small amounts, but that's the listing, athletics, non-PR. And I just would like to know, what is that for?
Okay.
And then on page 18, warrant P25-0... And then on page 18, warrant P-25-078. The second last entry at the bottom, the name is Dawson. And the account description is public safety. Year to date is just under $5,000. And what?
That was page 14.
Page 22.
That was, okay.
Oh, that last one?
Yeah.
I think it was.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that because I already gave my page 14 to the auditor.
And then I'm going to page 22, warrant P-25-078. And the one at the top of the page kicks over from page 21. It's EIUS-LLC. And the year to date paid is about $7,200, but the year to date invoiced is $38,000. And so I'd like to know, and it all, it all says sped. I'd like to know what it's for. And then on page 40, warrant P-25-078. The last entry at the bottom is one-time vendor. But the year to date invoiced is $923,000.
This is probably a series of multiple, I'm sorry, what page was that on?
It's page 40.
Is there a lot of one-time vendor lines or is it just one?
Well, there's a couple, there are three in this one, but then there's some other one-time vendors.
It's probably refunds.
Oh, yeah?
I can find that out.
Yeah, that's um.
It says real estate tax rep.
One, one-time vendor, despite being a bunch of different items, is a bunch of different people. So that's.
How it's listed?
The year to date, yeah. So that's why, that's why the year to date is so high because it's the cumulative amount of money that has come back to somebody in some way.
Okay. And then on page 45, warrant P-25-078. The third entry down, it's for snow removal. And the year to date paid is about $2,900, but the year to date invoiced is $230,000. And then on page 53, warrant P-25-078. There's an entry for US Bank National Association. And the account descriptions, one entry is for copy machine supplies and another one is for business contract services. The year to date is $50,222. And I just wondered, is it a credit card? And who is it issued to and what's it for?
I'll, I'll do some digging on that.
Okay.
I don't think that's a credit card that's.
Pardon?
That's not a credit card. It's funny because usually our debt payments go to US Bank. So I'm curious to see why it's a copy machine and.
Okay. And then on page 55 into page 56, and it's still warrant P-25-078. There's two long entries here for Xerox. And they, and the first one lists for description, other contract services. And the year to date is not, not very much, $8,600. But the second one to XE Systems, the year to date is almost $54,000. And they're all for copy machine supplies. So I'm just wondering, why are there two? Why aren't they rolled together? And what are the other contract services for?
Okay. So I will say, when it comes to the GL account description, they, I, I agree that they're, they're vague.
Yeah.
We, when we set up the chart of accounts, we have to assign description to this object code. It would be almost impossible for us to make it more descriptive than that.
Sure.
Because we need it to be general. There's only so many object codes we can put to attach to a department's org code that people can use to pay their bills against. So it's, it's not a situation where we don't want it to be descriptive, but it would make it really difficult to be any more descriptive than this. So I think with, with that being said, we can probably think of a way to extrapolate more data from UNIS that's more descriptive.
Yes.
To accompany this. So you can just see that right off the bat.
That would be very helpful.
And not have to deal with the generic object code descriptions we have to stick in there from UNIS.
Okay.
Could we go back to the original screen? I don't, we've traveled across the world here on our.
I think it looks nice. For the record, for the folks at home, screensaver.
Okay.
We're still here in Brockton.
Scotland seemed nice.
Yes, it did, yeah.
Page 124, warrant P-25-083.
And it's in, the page again.
124.
124, yeah.
Yes. The second entry down is to Bargman, Hendry and Archetype Inc. It's for other contract services and their year to date is $97,717.
I think that's public safety.
Yeah, I was thinking it might be, but I'd like to know.
I'll have to find that out for you. This has been hitting ARPA, so I'm not exactly sure which department.
Okay.
I'll have to let you know on that.
Okay. And on page 129, warrant P-25-083. I just want to note to everyone that the, there's an entry for CDM Smith, Inc. And the account description is traffic lines and signs. It's almost $1.5 million. Page was that? Page 129. And I'm not asking for you to look into anything because I am aware of the work they do for us, but it's just a lot of money.
I think some of that is for safety studies. Yeah, safety studies done on a couple of intersections in the last year.
Sure. And then on page 131, and this is warrant P-25-083. The top of the page, there's an entry for Community Counseling of Bristol County. And they're all described as other contract services. Their year to date invoiced is just under $102,000. Page 131.
I can find out more information for you on that.
Okay. Some of the questions I, that I had, I Googled the companies myself and figured out what they were for. Okay. On page 145, warrant P-25-083. The first four, first full entry is to something called Love Transforming Community. It's described as other contract services. It's for the fourth quarter of last year. And the year to date is about $34,000. Did you get it, page 145?
145. I think I already handed that page over to the auditor, Jim.
Okay. I've got it written down.
And then on page 155, the warrant is P-25-083. The first full entry is to O'Connor John. The description is building rent and lease. Year to date is $4,500. It looks like it's $2,250 a month. And I'd like to know what it's for. And on page 161, warrant P-25-083. The second full entry is to Signs By Tomorrow, which I assume is a signage company, but the account description is vehicle repair and maintenance.
Could be like signage on the side of, like labeling, labeling a vehicle.
Okay. Can we double check?
We can look into that. There's also the possibility of departments hitting the wrong object code sometimes.
Come on, that doesn't happen. Come on.
Something looks really kind of wacky.
That's it? Thank you.
All right.
I just have a couple of questions.
Counselor Isaac, go nuts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I only have a couple of things. I'd like to just reiterate what my colleagues brought up, you know, a number of really good issues. So on, let me see, on the page. There's a lot of like facility maintenance, that comes up a lot. So is it possible like to find out, I mean, I have one that's specific, but I just saw it throughout the warrant. So is there a way that we could either find out what buildings, you know?
Yeah, that would be included on the invoice that, you know, yeah.
So for example, page 124, it's, well, it gives the vendor and then where's the PO? I mean, it says BBE Corporation slash Remit. I mean, year to date, $85,225 for facility maintenance. So that's just, if we can get a little more specific on.
Which buildings?
What buildings? The other thing that comes up a lot is maintenance supplies. I mean, there's a lot of money being spent on maintenance supplies, which is fine. But I just, it would be great to kind of smell the cleanliness in the air. But it just seems like a lot, maybe they're not specifying what type of, you know, supplies. But I just like to get, maybe narrow that down a little bit, a little bit more.
I can definitely get more information for you, Counselor Isaac.
I mean, I know Counselor Castro asked about, you know, if you could get like details with specific, on specific, you know, descriptions. I know years ago, we tried, we worked, actually, the auditor at the time and IT worked together to be able to enhance, there's a place in UNIS where you go in and put in the description. So we worked with them to expand that. So when things were being input, they'd be able to describe a little bit better of, you know, what, what it was for. So I don't know if that's being used or not, but if we need to relook at that, maybe. So when the information is being put in, it could be a little clearer. We could, I know you just said a few minutes ago, oh, just, you know, sometimes they hit a wrong button. But it's really important to, for us to be able to know where things are being spent. And it's for the department heads, you know, when budget time comes. So if there's anything that you think we need to do, maybe to expand that field or if there's.
I, I think providing a different kind of reporting is really what's needed because all of this description is already in the requisition itself and into the PO. This particular report doesn't give that.
Okay.
So I'd have to sort of mush together this data into one report, not just use this.
Okay. Well, I mean, my point is just if there's anything that we need to do, maybe to work together. Like you work well with IT, but if there's anything that needs to be done to enhance, to be able to get it to work more efficiently, just, you know, we'll, we'll get that to them.
Yeah.
Nope, that's, that's it for me. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. We've, Counselor Castro?
We were talking before we started the meeting just about how, how can the city prevent or reduce fraud?
With internal controls and making sure that the same standards that my office has in terms of just everyday functions are applied throughout the entire city with all departments. The first step, one of many steps rather, is something as simple as this. We want to show people what we're looking at and what we expect. And in essence, that's what's required by you departments, payroll clerks, AP clerks. If, if anything, I'm trying to get everyone to start thinking and acting like an auditor because that's sort of an unwritten job description with every AP and payroll clerk or any finance professional are checks and balances and internal controls. So I think that's the first, first step is really, and it sounds, you know, almost elementary, but I think it's, it's necessary right now at this point to get everyone to start thinking this way. We have audits, we have external auditors who audit everything. You know, we have a Treasury Department that guards those bank accounts like Fort Knox. You know what I mean? We have wire control processes in place, things like that. So in terms of security and preventing fraud, we're, we're pretty strong. But we're only as strong as everyone else around us as well in thinking like a treasurer, thinking like a CFO, thinking like an auditor. That would be my professional opinion right now on where to begin is to getting people really to understand that this, I, I can't speak for my colleagues, well, actually, I think I can in this regard. We have high standards and the department heads should too when it comes to making sure their administrative staff in particular, or anyone having to do anything with a financial process. If it's a timesheet, buying supplies, these are all financial functions. Everyone needs to have this same thought process and share that to prevent even the, the baseline, you know, kind of fraud. I mean, if we were to say fraud, it's a pretty broad definition term is, you know, a breach, a security breach really, that has sort of a monetary consequence. But if we were kind of to buckle it down to everywhere, it really is internal controls and people taking accountability and responsibility for their staff and for their offices and making sure that everyone's expected to do this. making sure that everyone's expected to do this. That's my opinion as the auditor. No one's exempt from this. I don't care what position you hold in this city. Everyone's expected to have some kind of an internal control and an understanding that we're still, you know, we're a municipality, you could categorize it as a nonprofit, but we're still running a business at the end of the day. It's taxpayer money, and this is a business. I think that's key in getting everyone to understand. That's certainly what I've been plugging since I've been with the city.
Sure.
Since 2022.
Well, Counselor Texera had very, you know, noted some duplicative entries, and you can't have enough eyes to find things like that. But also, we also, talking earlier, we're talking about items that are purchased at the retail level and then brought back for a gift card, which doesn't make it back to the city. Of course, it probably happens. We have no sense of how much it happens.
Well, that's where the department's helping us really comes into play. If I don't know, how would anybody know?
Right.
So, I mean, if we could get down to the bare bones, this is something I actually did in my former employ. The city could solicit all of the banks in the area with our tax ID and require a reply for any accounts opened under the city's tax ID. Do the same thing with credit card companies as a way to prevent fraud. That might be something we want to consider here. I didn't always get responses when I did it previously, but I did get responses, and it's not unheard of. If anything, most establishments expect something like this. It's, you know, it's a risk, what's the word? It's preventative. Hey, we're the city of Brockton, and we want to know if any of you have any bank accounts opened under our tax ID. Please let us know by June 1st. And then it's also important to sort of groom those relationships with these organizations. You know, you'll probably get more of a reply from all the banks around or in the region and credit card companies and stuff like that if you've already kind of built that trust. Does that make sense?
Sure.
It's just, it's a business tactic.
Sure.
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah. Who would be responsible for doing that within the city?
It could be me, it could be the treasurer, it could be the CFO.
Okay.
It could be anyone, really.
Okay.
It could ask to staff to do. It's, I mean, I remember when I did it, it was just a simple fax.
Right.
To Bank of America, but we had something written formal. I don't recall if the city solicitor wrote it or if the treasurer wrote it, but something formal requiring this, you know, bank to tell us if, what bank accounts, if any, are opened under the city's tax ID because that is ours. So we do have the right to know, and they would have to reply.
Even if you did some test muscles and see what comes back?
Yeah, yeah. And I'd love to do that kind of thing with the credit card companies too. And you could do it with, with, you know, the Amazons and the Home Depots and the stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
I think that would be helpful. Curious to see what we'd get.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, it is, it is, it is something that I know that we've had conversations about where, how do you know? So that is another, you know, potential discussion topic, just a full conversation about, you know, how do we track it? What do we do? I had one thing I wanted to offer up.
I just want to follow up with Counselor Castro.
Oh, Counselor Isaac.
So, thank you. So I never thought about that, about people opening up accounts under the city, but what we were talking about is on a much smaller level, and it happens many times, and this is where we'd be, we'd depend on the department heads or people who are in charge of these projects, where similar, when you see it's double, the same purchased doubled, sometimes, you know, something isn't used, so it's returned. They don't credit it back because they don't have the credit card, so they give them a gift card instead. So it's not really fraud, just maybe misuse or maybe, you know, a little negligence, but it adds up. I mean, when you have multiple sales of, you know, a few hundred dollars here, a few hundred dollars there, 150, whatever it may be, that's what, you know, that's what we're asked, you know, that was what we were talking about, can be easily done and just, you know, and it's up to, so if that's something we could, it's on a much smaller scale.
Yeah.
But it's kind of just trying to figure out what is happening with this, these products that are being purchased at these, you know, retailers.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just.
You're all right. Thank you, Counselor. By the time, by the time it's come around to me, it's a little late and a lot of, and a lot of questions have been asked. I had a couple of things that I had marked out that my colleagues had beat me to, but that's, that's a good thing because I think we've got, you know, some, some sharp eyes on the, on the committee. I've just got one that I'm going to bring up, and I'll hand the paper over to you with the PO and everything, but it's a, the description's other contract services. It's a flat even $2,000. It's page 37. The bottom of the page, you know, a clean 20, a clean two grand. Year-to-date is also two grand, but there's an invoice that says final payment. And it just looked a little weird, so I did Google it, and I, it's a name, and the name is that of a AM radio show host. So I figured I'd, I figured I'd ask, but that's what I've got, and I'll, I'll hand it to you as soon as we adjourn, but.
The final, if I may, the final payment.
Yeah.
I didn't notice that on this report. That could be this department, I don't, I'll have to find out why we're paying the AM radio guy, but.
Wait, where is this? Page 37 at the bottom.
Sometimes departments let us know that if they open to PO for kind of a bulk amount, and this is going to be the last payment, the final payment, it's a cue for our staff to shut the PO completely.
Yeah.
So that could, that could explain that.
Well, the year-to-date of the same amount is what tripped me up.
Yeah.
But yeah, that was, that was it. Counselors, do we have any more business before the committee? Counselor Farwell?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, this is for the next meeting, but I wanted to give the auditor a heads up. The other evening, we received a letter from the Department of Local, Division of Local Services, Department of Revenue, and one of the line items in that letter was mention of a CARES Act deficit in the amount of 3.79 million that we're going to have to cover. Apparently, we've been able to roll it over, or we've been able to delay addressing that with permission from the Department of Revenue. And stop me if I have anything wrong, Madam Auditor, but we're still suffering from the overspending by the school department in FY '23. And so now we have 3.79 million, which I presume is going to have to come out of a local appropriation because to wipe that off the books, it has to be taken care of. So for the next meeting, I would like to find out if we could coordinate to have Mr. Dr. Clarkson come in, and I'd like to have copies of the invoices that caused that $3.79 million deficit spending, if it's possible to identify what it was that was purchased. Because I'm sure they purchased a lot of different things, but at some point, they reached a stop, don't spend anymore point.
Right.
And I'd like to find out what we went beyond, why we went beyond that stopping point, and now the taxpayers are going to have to come up with 3.79 million. And it, you know, you talk about being up at night between student transportation and some of these other issues, and now this. I just say a prayer that we'll, we'll get through the next fiscal year. I mean, we'll get through it, but it's what reductions do you have to make? Where do you, where do you cut? It's like a family budget. Where do you, where do you take out what you really would like to do and what you need to do, but you can't afford to do it? And so if we could coordinate with you and Dr. Clarkson and get that information, and if we could get those invoices in advance of the meeting so that we could get questions to you, Dr. Clarkson, in advance of the meeting, I think that would help streamline things. And the last thing I would say, Counselor Castro was quite right. Special ed is very expensive because it's so important to have an IEP, an Individual Educational Plan for a kid. We had someone on staff at the school department, I'm told, and she really worked her butt off to try to create programs that were in-house so that we didn't have to pay tuition to some other vendor, that we didn't have to put the student in a van or in a vehicle and transport them. And from what I understand, this is all hearsay, although I will try to reach her, she fell out of favor, and her work was not picked up by someone. And so now I think it is, okay, we got to do this, you know, we'll have the child go here, or we'll have the parent agree to allow the services to be provided outside the district. And the problem with that is that when you take a kid out of school, they don't socialize with their other, with their other children in the neighborhood, and you lose a lot by going outside the city and not knowing who your classmates are, and even if you're special ed, and I, you know, I'm very big on special ed because you want people to be the best they can be. That's all we ask. That's all we should absolutely make sure is help every student be the very best they can be. Not everyone is going to be a surgeon or an astronaut, but, but by God, we can help them go through school and, and bring them along as much as we can. And if we can do it in-house, it's cost-effective, and I think it's good for them to be around the other children in the city. So that's, that's it for me, and I appreciate the time tonight. I think we got quite a bit done.
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, that is something that, that has been discussed, and I, you know, that's more of a, that's less of an accounts item so much as it's a general city or school item, but it is true that there was, you know, a change in, a change in leadership and a change in philosophy that caused us to forsake a lot of the internal, well-regarded programs in favor of outside programs, which has led to one of the largest of the increases in transportation costs, a couple, you know, four or five million dollars. I think that that's something worth considering, Counselor, a discussion. I would, I would say I would widen the scope just to, to cover all the COVID money in general. CARES, ARPA, everything. We can, you know, ask the CFO to come in and to just let us know, hey, this is how much money we had, this is where it went, and, you know, if CARES went over, then we can find out where CARES went over and what the schools bought. But seeing no other business before us, we are adjourned.